Evening, everyone. Welcome to the Sylvan City Council Meeting for April twenty first, two thousand twenty five. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Hanum?
Here.
Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Ms. Dow?
Ms. Dow is excused.
And Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Six members of City Council are in attendance, therefore a quorum does exist. And if you could stand and join us in the Pledge of Agents this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Mr. Richardson, I have one item I would like to ask that you provide us an update based on the the email that she sent out regarding the activities from the weekend. So I'll add that as Agenda Item nine A. So update from the chief. I have nothing else. Mrs. Westfall?
Nothing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Members of council? Hearing none? Mr. Sanford?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Chief Miller?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Shaw?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schreier?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Branning?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
So do we have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, to accept the amended agenda. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to the meeting minutes of the meeting for April seventh of City Council. Mrs. Westfall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the meeting minutes for the City of Sylvan Council Meeting held April seventh, two thousand twenty five as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the council meeting on April seventh, two thousand twenty five as submitted. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item number five. We have Ordinance Number fifty-one, two thousand twenty-five. Ms. Branning?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is our annual agreement with the Lucas County Commissioners for the provision of public defender services. One bit of good news I wanted to point out, the cost of the public defender services we review annually is based on the number of city code cases that are represented by the public defenders. And last year there was a significant decrease, so that resulted in a decrease in the cost of the services. So it went from around ten thousand dollars to forty-two hundred. So they do a great job. They're available to us all the time, and I would recommend its approval.
Does that have anything to do with our charging?
Yes. If you recall back several years ago when we switched to charging under the O R C versus city code for most cases, and over the years, that's just, we still had, we're working through several of those that were on probation and would be recalled, so we were still being charged for those. But now I think we're really starting to see the results of that work.
That's commendable management of our. Other questions from Ms. Branning? Hearing none, we have Ordinance Number fifty-one, two thousand twenty-five. Mrs. Westfall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Ordinance Number fifty-one, two thousand twenty-five. I'll read by title only. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Sylvan, Ohio, with the Board of Lucas County Commissioners for the provision of public defender services to the Sylvan Municipal Court for the year two thousand twenty-five. I move passage of Ordinance Number fifty-one, two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance Number fifty-one, two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. And Ordinance Number fifty-one, two thousand twenty-five is approved as an emergency measure. Mr. Shaw? Welcome this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You only have a couple today.
I do, just one tonight for me, so.
Agenda Item six deals with our water storage tank facilities. For those who don't know, we have three elevated, one elevated, two elevated tanks, one ground level storage facility. And those have to undergo regularly maintenance, observations, inspections, just to make sure everything is good with them. Obviously, super critical pieces of infrastructure that we have, so they're on a pretty frequent review of what needs to be done. So last time this was done was in two thousand twenty-four. Dixon Engineering is our water tank maintenance type contractor slash engineer. They're regionally big in terms of that. They handle just about everybody's elevated tanks. And so they did an inspection of ours and they came back with a couple of different things, some that needed to be addressed now and some that could be addressed next time the tanks are painted. The stuff that's in front of you tonight is a proposal for eleven thousand dollars to put together the plans and specifications based on their inspection from last year to handle the stuff that's in an immediate need. So they will put together the plans, the specifications. They will solicit from a couple of different contractors to get some good quotes for that. And then I will be back at a later meeting with a recommendation to award to that particular contractor to do those things. The package is kind of long with all of the different contract agreements in it, but if you go way to the very back of it, there's a one-page listing of what exactly we're going to be doing with these inspections. The biggest one or the biggest item to get in compliance with is on our Burnham Park elevated tank. It's item number one there. It's modifying an overflow discharge pipe. The EPA will come up with different things that change throughout time that need to be addressed. Our elevated tank has been around for seventy years and now we're being required to modify an overflow pipe that's been the same way for seven years. So we're supposed to, instead of pointing it forty-five degrees, we're going to point it straight down. So those are the types of items that we're looking at doing. But to be in compliance with the EPA's inspection, we need to do those things. So that's the task in front of you. Eleven thousand dollars for Dixon to get us started. I'll be back at a later meeting with the actual physical work to do with the goal of having the work completed by the fall. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw? So Dixon is a known quantity dealing with this as will the subcontractors for the actual work.
Right. They'll do the, kind of the shopping of quotes. They'll come back to us after reviewing those with the recommended ones, say, this is the one you should move forward with. That's going to require council approval. We'll be back with that.
But I'm talking about those particular companies are the ones that do these things on a regular basis.
Exactly. Well said.
These don't seem like major issues.
They're all major when it comes to a water tank, but they're not, they're not major issues. Need to be done nonetheless, but we're estimating about thirty grand in improvements here.
And then, how about service? Water service in general?
Yeah, so, right, so this is great. These things are all things that can be done while the tanks are in service. Obviously, when you paint wet interiors, and actually the exteriors too, you have to drain them, but these will go on just as normal.
Okay.
Other questions for Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw, more of a question on the painting than the repairs here. The exteriors will be painted. Is that correct?
We currently have all three tanks scheduled for painting in twenty-seven and or twenty-eight, depending on the year.
So I was excited to see that only because they have our old logos on them. Will the new logos go on or will it be a solid color? Any idea yet?
That's the idea. It'll be my first go around as service director on what goes on it. You can certainly put that logo up there. Counsel. Purvey wants to look at something else and shop for something. We certainly can. Paint's most important to me and, you know, how that is, is, that's up to you guys.
Says Mayor Mark Frym.
I'm in.
We can get to that bridge when we're ready, but of course, how they look is completely up to what this body wants to see, so.
Other questions for Mr. Shaw? Hearing none, we have Ordinance Number fifty-two, two thousand twenty-five.
Mr. Hanson? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only Ordinance Number fifty-two dash twenty twenty-five. Accepting the proposal of Dixon Engineering, Inc. to provide engineering services for necessary improvements to the city's water storage tanks. Appropriating funds, therefore, in the amount of eleven thousand dollars. I move for passage of Ordinance Number fifty-two dash twenty twenty-five as an emergency measure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance Number fifty-two, two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. And Ordinance Number fifty-two, two thousand twenty-five is approved as an emergency measure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Shaw. So to the young lady who's putting her hours in, Mayor Stowe, my predecessor always explained this, and I don't know if you've heard this explanation before. Have you?
No.
Okay, then we'll go through it. So you heard we went through something called passages as an emergency measure? So many years ago, when the, when the town ordinances were originally written, so the codified ordinances and the charter of the city were written, they didn't have the electronic availability of getting that information out to the general public as quickly. So the traditional way was to go through three readings, and we still do some things with multiple readings. But for the vast majority of things, because this information's available online to anybody days and days in advance, and obviously council members have already seen it, most things pass as an emergency measure, and it takes five votes of council to pass something as an emergency measure. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. And when I'm picking and choosing which member of council, that's basically the person who's the chairperson of that particular committee is the person that I, that I'm looking at to read the ordinance for consideration. So, Mr. Hanum, if you could start around the horn and explain the different committees that each one of you are chair of.
Yeah, I'm chair of the Annexation and Zoning Committee.
Hi, Marcus Hanson. I'm chair of the Utilities and Environment Committee.
I'm Patrick Richardson, and I chair the Streets Committee.
I'm Mary Westfall, and as president of council, I chair two committees, Safety Committee and Finance Committee.
Oh, yes, I'm so used to going after them. Where's the voice? So I'm going to be part of it.
Brian McCann, I'm employee in Community Relations.
And Ms. Dow, who's absent this evening, she has the Facilities and Building Operations Committee. Any questions before we go on? Okay, just a little.
The only thing I would add to that is that this, you hear us adopt spending, spending actions a lot. We do a budget in the fourth quarter of the previous year, so last, so we adopted a budget in December of two thousand twenty-four for this year, and this particular item was one of the things that we reviewed and considered as part of the budget. So sometimes it feels like we're moving fast and spending a lot of money, but we've been, we've planned for it and we've done the work upfront. And we take, we take that budget process very seriously. We take spending your money very seriously.
And that's one of the things that gets more than one rate and never passes with an emergency.
A budget, yeah.
Budget. That's one of the things that, that obviously we spent an awful lot of time, as Mr. Han puts it. So any, any questions? Okay, great. So, yeah, no, no, happy to provide that information. So moving on to Agenda Item number seven, we have proposed Resolution Number ten, two thousand twenty-five for consideration. Ms. Branning, I'll let you kind of lead the way on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ordered legislation contingent of the Metropolitan Parks Providing the Financial Information, which they did last week, and I emailed it to everybody, so there are no questions. I think this is what you wanted to see based on the presentation that was made.
Any questions for the administration in regards to this resolution? Hearing none. Mr. McCann, we have Resolution Number ten, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for passage of Resolution Number ten dash twenty twenty-five as an emergency measure.
Second.
You gotta read it. A resolution of the council, the City of Sylvan is supporting a ten-year, one-point-four-mill replacement levy for the Metropolitan Park District of the Toledo area.
I move for passage of ordinance for Resolution Number ten dash twenty twenty-five as an emergency measure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number ten, two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. And Resolution Number ten, two thousand twenty-five is approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to Agenda Item eight, we have the S U P one, twenty twenty-five. This was sent only a month or so ago to the, to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission, Municipal Planning Commission came back with a recommendation to approve this particular application for S U P one, two thousand twenty-five. So we're here this evening for consideration to set a public hearing for this. Mr. Hanum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we set a public hearing for June second, two thousand twenty-five at seven fifteen on S U P application number one dash twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion and a second to say a public hearing for S U P one, twenty twenty-five for fifty-eight thirty-four Monroe Street, Suites M and N at seven fifteen P M here in council chambers before the council meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. And this will be published. The clerk, you could make sure that's published and we'll get that on and look forward to that public hearing. With that, we have Agenda Item nine A for just an update from the chief. If you could give us a reminder of our interesting activities on Good Friday and Monday. Thursday and over the weekend. That would be wonderful.
Yes, last Thursday, we became aware of some games being played out of our high schools here locally. They were called Senior Assassin. It was all sold as, billed as a water gun game where the last person standing was the last person that would cry, and it was a entry fee paid to be involved in this. Played by the senior classes of both Northview and Southview. Secondly, the winner would get a money prize. At Southview and at Northview, it was first, second, and third place received money payouts. All in all, it sounds like a very harmless game, and what we were seeing Thursday took a very dangerous turn. We ended day shift with a call with a weapons call at McGuire Insurance, which is right next to a bank. And the person was in dark clothing, stalking around the building, hiding in the shrubs, which obviously sent the whole department over there with real weapons drawn, only to find a student in the shrubs with his water pistol in dark trying to go after one of his people that he was supposed to get to assassinate in this game. We're like, wow, this is getting really, this is bad. That same day township, one of the township off-duty officers was leaving, and he actually has a dash cam on his vehicle and caught two of them having a water war going down Central Avenue. They were actively trying to shoot out of a movie car into a convertible that was being driven by another student across other lanes of traffic. So, and then that evening, Officer Simmons stopped a vehicle for no headlights on down by Brenton McCord, and she was pulling in behind that car to facilitate the traffic stop. The car that had been following them pulled up behind her and essentially boxed her in. At which time she called for backup, got out to, started dressing the first car. The passenger in the second car got out with a water pistol in her hand and started running towards the officer alongside the police cruiser. So it was something that could have ended very, very badly. Thankfully, our officers, we do a lot of extensive training and everything we can to help them make these judgment-type decisions. It was just, we were seeing in both of those carloads admitted they had been chasing each other through town trying to play this game. I know when we did reach out to the schools and we were able through our S R Os to identify who the students were that were in charge of the games at Southview and Northview, they assured us there's rules in these games. They're not supposed to be playing from motor vehicles. You're not supposed to be playing in the dark. You're not supposed to be going on private property. Well, we just ticked off all those in about an eight-hour window, and we're like, this has, this has got to stop before someone gets hurt. We reached out to Dr. Motley. I had a long conversation with her and Tim Zeroff, the Assistant Superintendent as well. They had concerns. We did do a press release. We worked jointly with Sylvan Township Police as well as their administration. I spoke to Mayor Fry as well that we needed a hundred percent backing on this to make this successful and, and help bring the awareness to this. We did a press release with Channel eleven, and we also did one with Channel thirteen. The video of the traffic stop was released to Channel thirteen at their request, and that has since gone viral. I believe we're up over a hundred and eighty thousand views on that. So in some, gauging from some of the comments that were being said, I think some of the parents weren't exactly aware of how harm, how this harmless game could have shifted to a tragedy. So we have not had any calls over the weekend. I believe Township had one where it was a thirteen-year-old that was shot with an Orby gun, which is a Orby. They're little gel pellets.
Oh, okay.
But they're also freezing the pellets, so, which essentially turns it into a bullet, a projectile. So that thirteen-year-old ended up having welts on her, so. And that was, that was some of our concern and why we said we need to adopt this zero tolerance policy. The game itself is not illegal. It's safe to be played as long as you're playing in a confined environment. It's not designed to be played on roadways. It's not designed to be played in Myers grocery stores or Kroger's grocery stores. But the concern is that the students would continue playing this if something wasn't, wasn't done and we were going to end up with a hurt or even worse killed student, so.
Thanks for the update, Chief. When I spoke to the chief on Friday about the circumstance, the first thing that came to my mind, and I'm sure for all of, if not many, if not all of you as members of council, is first, I want to commend the officer for handling the situation. I'm sure you've all seen the video, as professionally as she did. Reading the riot act, as I would call, my father would have called it to me, and appropriately so. And, but my concern was about the next individual who may not have the training as one of our officers or the township officers, but had a weapon that wasn't a water pistol and would hope, unfortunately, and tragically perhaps, overreacted to something that they didn't understand was going on. So that's, that's the thing that came to my mind. So I appreciate the Township and the city getting together on this and hopefully getting this stopped before there was going to be any other things. And I think, Chief, the thing that you said was, and I thought about my own brain when I was eighteen years old, the way it was working or not working. If you get down to the last ten, if it's doing this when there's a, when there's a hundred students left and you're down to the last ten and there's money on the table, it's going to get a little more aggressive.
It was sizable money. It was five hundred dollars for first place at both high schools, and Northview followed it up with two hundred and fifty dollars for second and two hundred and fifty dollars for third place. So there was a decent incentive for the kids to go all out and be the last person standing.
Call funding against them for exactly this purpose. Enjoy it, but enjoy it in an enclosed, specific setting for the, for the purposes in which it was.
And all, all the students that were involved in this, we've reached out to parents and talked to them, so they're fully aware of what had happened.
So any questions from council members? Comments from council members?
I have a comment that I do think, you said about reaching out to parents. I think that's the biggest thing, because when I read it, I talked to my wife about it, and I have a sixth grader and a junior at high school. We immediately called down the family room. They totally already knew everything about this game. They knew the rules. They knew how it worked. So we're the ones in the dark, you know, so I think, obviously, we have to educate the kids on why this is a bad idea, but I do think educating the parents is equally is important because the kids already know about all this. They just don't make the right judgment calls on how to handle it, you know?
You know, a lot of what we heard from the parents was, it's just a harmless water pistol game, and when we showed them the pictures and show them, release that video, a lot of the comments were, that's not what we were told. Yeah, curse that.
When I spoke with Mr. Hanson on Friday, he shared that he had received an email from the school explaining this. Do you know if they found a way to stop the reward money or award money from being distributed?
We, I personally spoke with the parent as well as the student that was in charge of the Southview one on Friday. The school spoke with the Northview ones today, and both of them are in the process of returning monies to the students and saying that it's, that it's over.
Well, thank you for your leadership and quickly taking action to make sure that our community was safe. I do think Mayor Fry also had mentioned to me on Friday, which you referenced today, this concealed carry piece. If somebody had, some kid coming up with a black water gun and they have a concealed carry, and that's how accidents happen, so.
This isn't just to Sylvan. This is a nationwide event that's going on, and all you have to do is Google it. I mean, they had a student shot in Florida by an off-duty officer because they were dressed in black going around his house, and he thought they were going to do a home invasion, only to find out they were playing this game. And where were they? On private property, after dark, dressed in black. You know, all the things that you shouldn't be doing, and that's what they were doing, and there's cases where accidents have happened because they're chasing each other and cars are rolling over or children are getting run over, and, you know, that's, that's the scary stuff you see on the internet when you see this, and it's like, we, we just need to work together as a community to make sure that this doesn't happen, and we can find some outlet for the students to have a safe, fun, senior game to play.
Other comments from members of council or questions for the chief? Appreciate the leadership, and please extend our thanks to Officer Simmons for the professional way in which. But enjoy it in an enclosed, specific setting for the, for the purposes in which it was.
And all, all the students that were involved in this, we've reached out to parents and talked to them, so they're fully aware of what had happened.
So any questions from council members, comments from council members?
I have a.
Comment that I do think you said about reaching out to parents, I think that's the biggest thing because when I read it, I talked to my wife about it and I have a sixth grader and a junior in high school. We immediately called them down the family room. They totally already knew everything about this game. They knew the rules. They knew how it worked. So we're the ones in the dark, you know, so I think, obviously, we have to educate the kids of why this is a bad idea, but I do think educating the parents is equally as important because the kids already know about all this. They just don't make the right judgment calls on how to handle it, you know.
You know, a lot of what we heard from the parents was, it's just a harmless water pistol game. And when we showed them the pictures and show them, release that video, a lot of the comments were, that's not what we were told. Yeah, curse that.
When I spoke with Mr. Hanson on Friday, he shared that he had received an email from the school explaining this. Do you know if they found a way to stop the reward money or award money from being distributed?
We, I personally spoke with the parent as well as the student that was in charge of the Southview one on Friday. The school spoke with the Northview ones today. And both of them are in the process of returning monies to the students and saying that it's, that it's over.
Well, thank you for your leadership and quickly taking action to make sure that our community was safe. I do think Mayor Fry also had mentioned to me on Friday, which you referenced today, this concealed carry piece. If somebody had some kid coming up with a black water gun and they have a concealed carry and that's how accidents happen, so.
This isn't just to Sylvan. This is a nationwide event that's going on and all you have to do is Google it. I mean, they had a student shot in Florida by an off-duty officer because they were dressed in black going around his house and he thought they were going to do a home invasion only to find out they were playing this game. And where were they? On private property, after dark, dressed in black. You know, all the things that you shouldn't be doing and that's what they were doing. And there's cases where accidents have happened because they're chasing each other and cars are rolling over or children are getting run over and, you know, that's, that's the scary stuff you see on the internet when you see this. And it's like, we, we just need to work together as a community to make sure that this doesn't happen and we can find some outlet for the students to have a safe, fun, senior game to play.
Other comments from members of council or questions for the chief? Appreciate the leadership and please extend our thanks to Officer Simmons for the professional way in which the officer handled that, that particular situation.
I will.
The, that brings us to the end of our agenda for this evening. We have a couple of items. The Board of Architectural Review, Ms. Planning Commission meeting minutes from the meeting last Wednesday. You might want to take note of those things. If you have questions about them, please let us know. Hearing, are there any other items that need to come before the other council meeting this evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Did you want me to know about?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yes.
Just, as you all know, we voted, or you all voted, I should say, to rename the administration building after, after former Mayor Stow. The unveiling of that and the official lighting of that will be on the council meeting for the first, basically our next council meeting, which will be the fifth of May, Cinco de Mayo. It will be six-thirty to seven-thirty, so obviously we'd love to have you all in attendance for that. Lettering will be up by that point. Mr. Shaw, correct?
Yeah, it should be up this week with forty mile an hour winds. It's going to be chore to keep it covered.
Okay, fair enough. So it may or may, the lettering will be up, but it may or may not be covered.
We're going to do this in front of the building, is that right?
Correct, yeah. There's going to be lighting in front of it, so it'll be lit at night and so forth as well, so. And hopefully it won't be raining. But maybe we'll be standing on the sidewalk.
And we're going to do this at six-thirty.
Six-thirty to seven-thirty, yeah.
And the mayor's been, the former mayor's been notified?
Yeah, and we, we make sure we coordinate with, with his schedule.
If he doesn't show up, that would be bad.
Yeah, that would, that would be a little, little problematic for the purposes in which we were intending to do this. Any other items to come before council? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion in the second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Thank you very much. And we'll be here at the next council meeting, May fifth, two thousand twenty-five, in these council chambers at seven-thirty P M. Thank you.